I'd like to call to order the meeting of, the Planning Commission meeting of July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. We'll open with an invocation by Deanne Davis and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Lord, we ask your blessing on our community and our world during this time. Be with our leaders as they guide us and as they make decisions to keep our citizens safe. Give them the wisdom and knowledge they need to carry on their duties. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Ted?
Here.
Scott?
I'm here.
Amanda?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
You'll receive the meeting minutes from June ninth. Were there any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, they'll stand as submitted. There is no old business this evening, so we'll move directly into new business. And first up is a site plan review. We'll be hearing from Neil Mullins representing RL Carriers. They seek the Planning Commission's approval to proceed with plans to add an additional one hundred foot by four hundred and sixty foot dock extension and remodel the maintenance shop. R and L also plans to redo the entrances, creating a more efficient and safer traffic flow. Neil, are you here this evening?
This is Neil, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good, good, good.
Thank you for joining me.
Yeah, this is a different situation here.
Sure is.
Yeah.
A little bit about what you guys are wanting to do.
Well, we've got a terminal up in Columbia, you're all aware of it. And we've been thinking of adding on to it for some time. And it's come time to add on to this building because frankly, the freight business is busting out the seams right now. The project actually has three little parts, well, big parts. The first part is our trucks come in off of Heck Avenue. And I'm not sure if you folks have, have a visual of the concept plan I did.
Yeah, I believe.
Yes, we do.
Okay, good, thank you. Our trucks come in right now off of Heck Road. And there's two entrances to our site. One is in the southwest corner where the trucks come in. And the other is a secondary parking lot access. One thing we want to do is rework these entrances. So the trucks come in to the southeast side. And this is really a safety issue more than anything. The, when you're backing up a truck with a fifty-three foot trailer, it's always best to rotate around a terminal in a counterclockwise position. I mean, when you try to back up a trailer and you're in the driver's seat, it's better to back up being able to use your mirrors rather than seeing nothing at all. So that's one part we want to do is just rework the area so we can have the trucks come in. And the major part is adding some more docks for our freight. And that's, we're planning to add about seventy-two more dock doors. And.
Have you applied for the DORA for those?
Say again, please?
For the door, for, for the tax abatement. Have you applied?
No, we have not. Not that I know of.
Is that a part of what they've applied for, Lance?
Yeah, I, school's aware of it, I just have to look at the process, but they definitely got early, we got them in early last, let's see, June of nineteen, we approved their, their abatement, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that, this is a part of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But I meant CRA, which.
We will follow up on that, I'm certainly appreciative of it. And that's basically it, we're, we want to do these two things up front. And also our shop building needs reworked and remodeled. One of the advantages of having these trucks come in, in this other entrance, in the southeast corner, is we have a thing called a safety lane. Where every truck that comes in the gate goes through the maintenance shop and hits a, a bay there with mechanic. And before he even backs up to, to the truck dock, he is able to get a safety check, I mean hoses, tires, all that light bulbs, the whole bit. And right now, the way we're set up, the truck has to come in, travel clear around the building to get to the maintenance shop. So that's basically the three things we're looking for a blessing on here is reworking the entrance, adding on to our terminal, and increasing and remodeling our maintenance building. I'm pretty well talked out, has anybody got any questions?
Any, any questions from the Planning Commission?
I, this is Tucker, I had one question, I saw like a, a truck wash building also I saw on there, that something you guys were planning?
Yeah, that's kind of on the wish list. Right now, we don't have any, it's an automatic truck wash, just like a car wash, only on a bigger scale. We've added that just in the past month or so. The, the ownership would like to put a truck wash up there, keep the equipment clean. But that, I really haven't mentioned that because that's kind of like, once all this other stuff is done, then we'll approach that project.
Okay.
August and Lance, was there anything in that doesn't, doesn't meet?
No, I, I think we're good here, I've given them the, the stormwater plans, you know, SWP three, you know, regulations, so I think they'll be fine there. We're just, we're just really happy, happy that they're, they're coming, we appreciate it.
Yep. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, can I have a, a motion to approve as submitted?
To remove.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have roll call, Deanne?
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that's approved and we'll, we'll get it on its way on our end. Next up, we have Amy Groner, she would like to have the Planning Commission give approval to open a massage therapy practice at Nine Felger Court. Amy, why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're hoping to do?
I'm actually just looking to move my current practice for people right now, and it's just difficult with the new regulations, I've actually, I've been looking for over a year for my own space. I couldn't afford anything before that was for rent or for sale, but I came across something. And with everything going on, I have a very strict schedule to keep, I can't offer half hour, ninety minute appointments, and I'm just not looking to necessarily expand my business, I just want to move it somewhere else so I can be by myself and schedule accordingly what my clients need. And then I also, it's nothing different than what I had at the other location, I'm going to bring back the salt therapy room that we had there, my clients like that and yoga, one-on-one yoga classes, obviously that space, I don't know if you know it, I can't fit anything more than one.
Okay. Is there any questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve as submitted?
Make a motion, we approve as submitted by Ms. Groner.
I have roll call, Deanne?
Ted?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Very good, all done, Amy, you're good.
Okay, Amy.
Next up is Robert Gamble, who seeks the Planning Commission's approval to build four storage buildings on his Fairfield Avenue property. Mr. Gamble, are you available? Hello? Is there? Amber, is there a, Mr. Gamble in the meeting?
I don't see anybody by that name in the meeting.
So I would ask the Planning Commission to make a motion to table this until we, we can speak with Mr. Gamble?
There is one phone number, I'm going to unmute real quick, if we could ask that too.
Mr. Gamble, are you with us?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to hear and entertain a motion to, to table this until we can hear from Mr. Gamble.
I'll move to table Mr. Gamble's submission.
I'll second.
I have roll call.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Next up, we have a replat. David Koloski seeks the Planning Commission's approval to replat his property located at two fourteen and two eighty-eight South Bayshore Drive, enabling him to sell some of his property. Mr. Koloski, are you with us?
I'm with you, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Why don't you just tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do?
I'm looking to sell my rear yard forty feet to Shelley Logan, which will give her lake access.
Any questions from the Planning Commission?
So your, your lot is the four point seven five acre, is that right?
No.
No?
I think that was Mr. Gamble.
I've got Bayshore map right here, I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm at two fourteen.
I don't have, we don't have a number on our map.
I believe it's lot twenty-six.
Okay.
Ted, I might clarify that it is point, zero point four seven five acres, that would be his lot twenty-six.
Right, okay.
Koloski's.
Okay, thank you.
So he'd sell forty feet off the back of his property, right?
Correct.
Is that putting anything on that property out of code, or out of variance? Is there a house on that property?
No, it's just vacant land.
Okay, so it's vacant land, so. With just being vacant land, as, as long as it doesn't take that chunk of property to make it non-sellable, I don't see that there should be any problem with that.
It shouldn't have any effect on itself, actually it will enhance the sellability because the owner of lot number six will now have lakefront access.
Okay. No, no, all I was saying, not, not, just as long as your lot that, that you're chunking forty feet off the back of it is still sale, sellable to build something on. We don't want to take a lot that is in compliant, that you can build a house on and make it something that's not recommended, I mean, you can do whatever you want, it's your property, but it's not recommended to make it that you can't all of a sudden sell or build a house on it.
Right.
As long as that lot still meets those requirements, you can pretty much do, my opinion is, you can do what you want with the back of the property.
Thank you.
I also went over and met with Mr. Koloski and, and just reviewed the request and it, and it makes, it makes total sense. And if nothing else, it'll enhance the property value of lot six with the lake accessible, accessibility.
Well, would someone like to make a motion to approve as submitted?
Make a motion to approve as submitted. Second.
I have roll call.
Tucker?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Very good, it's all, all approved, Mr. Koloski, you're good to go.
I'd like to thank all the members of the Planning Commission, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rob Struheric representing Lakefront Preserve LLC, he seeks the Planning Commission's approval to replat lots twenty-five and thirty-three of Radcliffe Pass, as well as lots forty-five and forty-six of Danbury Way. You want to unmute yourself, Mr. Struheric, and tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do?
How's everybody doing tonight?
We're wonderful.
Good. Thanks for meeting virtually here, I know it's inconvenience to some, I appreciate it. Yeah, we, again, Radcliffe Pass, we sold a corner lot there, and I'd like to replat that lot, I believe it meets all the compliances of our zoning code. And on Danbury Way, we have sold, I believe, two additional lots there on the, it would be the northwest side of Danbury Way. And actually, today we put the base coat on Danbury Way, which completed the, the developing of that street. So the curbing was done about two weeks ago and we completed the base coat, so. So actually, on that particular street, five of the seven lots are sold, and we would like to have your permission to replat two additional lots here to keep things moving along.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Struheric? We've got to ask him something, I mean, we can't make it this easy.
Rob, have you ever been this busy?
I don't know if I should answer that or not. Keep things going the way they're going. They're, it's, it's difficult times. It's a difficult time to be in business, thank goodness for, for the current economics and, and the inventory we have, and also, you know, a lot of gifted, you know, some of this inventory's been around a long time, so it's great to see some of our inventory go. And when you actually look at the holding cost of it, sometimes you don't even actually make money on property, but, but you have money tied up in it, so it's just good to see the inventory move, and it also allows us to improve other areas of the community. And just recently, like today, even the private streets of Old Sabra, we've did, I don't know, hundreds and hundreds of, of tons of paving material over the past two weeks.
You have any extra?
Yeah. That momentum is just, it carries forward through not only what you sell, but also in, in, in keeping your existing products viable. So, again, not an easy environment, not easy to keep employees and subcontractors and everybody happy, but it has been so far a good summer, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Can we entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to approve as submitted?
I'll second.
I have roll call.
Brian?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
I'll abstain due to potential business reasons.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
You're good to go.
Thank you very much, you all have a great evening.
You too. Well, at this point, is there any comments from the Planning Commission?
I have something, I know last Planning Commission, members of my team came in to talk about some property and it was tabled for further discussion, and I don't know if my team has ever heard back, so we can get that, that outstanding item completed.
Tucker, we're, we're still working on the utility aspect of it currently, and we've been working with our engineers, and we also had the surveyors come out, and we'll probably meet with you very soon, just, we haven't got the full study from our engineers yet.
I just want to make sure we're moving forward, that's all.
And Amy, I just wanted to, we, we saw your hand raised after the Commission comments, we do public comments, so we, we will get to you.
Okay.
Is there any other Planning Commission comments?
I did a recent walk through the park and seen what was done so far and how beautiful that is looking. I had a meeting with Pat and Park Beautification Board tonight with the ninety-five percent drawings, and I know that's going out to bid here shortly, so I'm, I'm really proud of the city and I'm proud of everyone who's been able to put together, and what a gift that is being given to the city and everyone, the efforts of everyone involved.
Brian, I'd like to add, most, most, all of you probably are aware that we met last night with the trustees of the American Legion and they unanimously voted to suspend the street fair for the year, and it's probably the wisest decision, and we were going to wait till the end of the month to make that final call, and, and I think just following footsteps of Campfield Fair closing last week or canceling, we just felt the need to move it up, so we went to the trustee meeting last night and they, they voted it out, so probably the wisest choice, not the best choice for the city, but it's probably the wisest choice with what we're faced with here.
Well, Scott, I, I've been, I've been waiting until I heard whether you guys voted or not, but I, I'm going to probably request that the city council move forward with something, i- i- if it's possible, I don't know if it is or isn't. But I, I know that there, there are others that would still like to see, see some, some form of a get together, it doesn't have to be near as grand, but my idea would be perhaps to, to like enact a DORA or something and then bring in food trucks, and maybe close down the street for like Friday and Saturday. And no, no parade, no tents, no rides, just, just a way that the community can still get together, in a way that we could maybe control the, the distance of it a, a little bit without completely skipping a year, because I know a lot of reunions and everything base around those dates, and a lot of people are going to be in town. I don't know if it's something that will be possible or not, but it's definitely something that I would like to at least pursue to see if it's possible. I know we've got space for, for bands and mu- music, and I think that even if, if we completely tone it down and change the schedule and make it several hours of a day rather than two and a half days long, that we may, may be able to try something.
Jake and I have had several conversations about that, and of course, just don't want to speak out of school there, we're just not sure exactly what we'll do, whether we do it, most likely just with city's blessing and, and not even maybe include the Legion in, in what does get planned, but I, I believe there'll be something on the burner there that Jake will probably, of course, head up, so.
Yeah, I think we're.
Keep our fingers crossed for something like that.
Very good. Yeah, I just don't want anyone to think yet at this point that it's completely like those dates are completely dead.
I think maybe I, just, it may be just even a one-day event, like you say, just a, a one-day, or something, yeah, just something, so.
Yep, I agree.
It's going to be a pretty empty weekend without the fair.
I don't, I don't want to miss that on my watch, I can tell you that.
Like I've said in the past, Scott, I've been involved with the Goshen Tractor Pull Association, we've had two large tractor pulls with the blessings.
Right.
Want to reach out to me, I can give you some guidance, at least what we've done, how we've got our blessings and how we've got through with crowds and controlling them.
Great, thanks, Tucker.
Any other Commission comments? Well, Amy, you've been waiting, you, you have comments for the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask because I didn't bring it up or nobody else asked about it, it's okay to order a sign as long as it's under fifty square feet.
You just have to work with August, submit the, the drawings for your sign, and he'd give you the permit for that.
Okay. Okay, so I go to municipal signs first, get it done up, and then take it to him.
Yep, you can submit, Lance, go ahead.
Yeah, I would submit a drawing of what you want to do and just make sure, we don't want you creating a sign that isn't, you know, doesn't fit the, the requirement, so just, I, I think you do a, a quick sketch and, you know, August and I will work with you and, and make sure it's good to go before you order it.
Actually, I sent one to August when I sent in all the other information, I don't know if you have a picture.
Don't believe we, I, I don't know that it made the packet, but I'll talk to August tomorrow.
Okay. Because what I was looking at, I think, is around thirty-two square feet, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that, that sounds right, but we'll double check it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Skip has something, or you can unmute yourself, Skip.
I just want to, I want to jump on what you just said about something downtown. Rick and I talked to quite a few of the merchants this week, and they all really want to see something happen, because their, their businesses have really just, they've blossomed when we did something.
Yeah.
And they would love to see something, so I, I support that a hundred percent.
You and Rick did a lot of good work, I'm sure we'll hear more about that next week at the council meeting, but that was really awesome to see all of the response that the two of you guys got doing those interviews.
And I did hear something else today. The, the opening of Colombian Nutrition, their grand opening. The owners, the male owner, this, this is what I was told, no, I haven't confirmed this, but he proposed to the female owner, and I think that's really cool.
That's really cool.
Yeah.
Did she say yes, or let's sell more first?
Well, I haven't heard that yet.
Expect the months. Receivable.
And on the event in September, please touch base with Eric at the Chamber, we had our Chamber Board meeting this morning, and the Chamber wants to support, since we're not having our own events this summer, fall, it looks like we won't, we would be interested in supporting other events that are going on in the city, so the Chamber could possibly offer some support and help with whatever you replace the street fair with.
Very good. Yeah, I, I definitely in, in my heart think we need to do something, it, it does not have to be forty thousand people walking down the street and, and congregating en masse, but if, if we have some food trucks with some tape on the street with lines where people can stand and wait, and we've got places where, where it's broken out for different groups to stand to listen to music and stuff, I think it's still a way that neighbors can get together and family can spend time together, bring, bring the community together without, out, without jeopardizing. family can spend time together, bring the community together without jeopardizing anything and still keep something moving.
If not, the more to get a fair food fix, right?
That's right. I'm working on being fat enough, but there's always room for more. Any other comments? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you very much. Until next month.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.